The following is a local resident producer's program. The program contains the sole responsibility of the producer and does not necessarily reflect the views or policies of CATV2, Oshkosh Community Access Television, the City of Oshkosh, the Oshkosh Cable Television Advisory Commission, or Time Warner Cable.
Hi, everyone. Welcome to another edition of I am Oshkosh. Cheryl Hens here, and our guest this evening, as well as my co-host, is Tony Palmieri. He is a co-host, of course, because he has been for two and a half years, but he's also here tonight as guest because he's currently on the city council. So, welcome and welcome back.
Thank you, Cheryl.
We want to talk about a whole host of things tonight, no pun intended. You were elected to the city council last month, and you were sworn in on the 17th of April.
That's correct.
So, you've had, let's see, as of this taping, you've had the organizational meeting, and you've had one regular-type meeting. Let's talk about the organizational meeting first, because I guess you guys set a record. It was like four hours long?
Actually, it would have gone longer were it not for the fact that the Plan Commission was meeting at 4:00 PM, and their meetings are televised, and so they needed the cameras.
The cameras, yeah.
And Frank Tower, our mayor, did not want the organizational meeting to continue off-camera. He wanted the population to be able to see it, which I can understand.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you definitely want that. Well, there were some changes that came about. I guess, you know, one of the more significant changes from my perspective is that in the past, when resolutions would be brought forward and there would be amendments proposed to those, you know, citizens would only have the opportunity to talk about it as it was originally presented. Now, they have an opportunity to talk about it as presented, but then if someone on the council moves to amend it, they get to come back and discuss the amendment, which I think is a good thing.
I think so, too. It'll allow for more accountability to the public, so that way the council can't dramatically change a resolution without giving citizens an opportunity to comment. So, I think that's going to be a positive change.
You know, it may make for a little bit longer meeting when things like that come up, but that's okay. You know, I think that the public will be appreciative of the fact that they've got an opportunity to actually comment on things. And that was one of the things that Bob Cornell had mentioned he'd like to see happen when he was running. So, you know, to everyone's credit, they went along with that. Citizen statements, there'd been some talk about moving them to the beginning of the meeting as it was many, many years ago, but at the end of the day, when, truly at the end of the day, you guys left it at the end of the meeting. And that kind of, I guess, makes sense when you think about it, and yet, for those poor people who just come to make a citizen statement, you know, they've got to sit through the whole meeting. But what were your thoughts on that?
Well, only Frank Tower and I voted to move it to the front of the meeting, which is where they were back until 1996, I believe, if I recall. I just thought it was a good idea just to change, just see what it would be like if we had them at the beginning of the meeting. There's been some concern that some of the citizen statements at the end of the meeting become angry, and Frank Tower thought that maybe if we moved them up to the front of the meeting, you know, before any city business takes place, maybe there'll be less angry statements. I mean, I don't think it matters, beginning or end. We finally voted to keep them at the end, but ultimately, it's not going to make that big of a difference.
Yeah. Well, speaking of angry statements, I think we've seen, you know, one or two citizens who get up there and routinely will become very belligerent with, it used to be Mayor Bill Castle, and, you know, just, I mean, downright nasty, belligerent, very mean-spirited and ugly, sometimes even swearing, which is completely inappropriate behavior, no matter how you feel about the person up there, or persons up there. Is any effort being made to try and quell that a little bit, or are you just going to kind of play it by ear and see how it goes?
I think Mayor Tower has said that he will simply adjourn the meeting or recess the meeting, just throw down the gavel, call for a break, and I think that's a good idea. Hopefully, those will be very, very rare occurrences. I think one thing Bill Castle was inconsistent at doing was asking the other six members of the council if they wanted to give somebody more time, because generally, when people become angry, it's because they feel they need more time, and the mayor just says, "No, your five minutes are up." I really do think if a mayor would simply look to the other councillors and say, "Should we give this person more time?" If the seven people say no, I think we're much less likely to get anger from a citizen. So, I have a great deal of confidence in Mayor Tower on these kinds of matters, and I think he'll run a very orderly meeting.
Okay. One of the things that you weren't able to get to, and that's in large part, I think, because you did run out of time, was you wanted to have a discussion of the city manager goals.
Yeah.
And, you know, there was not really overwhelming, I think that when you ran out of time, didn't you try to bring it back at the next meeting or something? You wanted that issue raised. And they're just, you know, it was confounding to me, because despite all the commentary from some of these council members about accountability and got to have this and got to be more responsible, got to have accountability, our city manager this and our city manager that, and yet, there were only two people on that dais who voted in favor of bringing this back for some kind of discussion, and that was you and Mayor Tower.
Yeah.
None of the other people, not Councilman Esslinger, not Deputy Mayor Burke Tower, not Jess King, Brian Bain, Dennis McHugh, nobody else wanted to bring this back.
Well, if I understand correctly, those who don't want to discuss the goals and public claim that the way they would be discussed could become a public evaluation of the city manager, and apparently, a public evaluation of the city manager would be a violation of state law. I don't think a discussion of the goals has to become a public evaluation of the city manager. But having said that, I don't think a public evaluation of the city manager is necessarily a bad thing. I certainly don't think it's illegal. I mean, for example, what if, what if a citizen were to come to the city council and during citizen statements just wanted to tell the council what he or she thought about the city manager? Would that be illegal? Would it be illegal if a councillor commented on it and said, "I agree with you," or "I disagree with you"?
I don't know. I don't know that it would be illegal, but I think the fact that you would all be having a discussion might lead to something...
Yeah, I mean, to put it another way, I had said at the meeting that one thing I would want to know is how did the previous council come to these goals? And I want to know that publicly so that we don't make the same mistake again, because I think a lot of people are agreeing now that these goals that were set are, at best, weak. Maybe they're a lot worse than that.
Yeah.
But some of the councillors were suggesting that if they had to explain how they came up with these goals, then they would have to evaluate the city manager to explain that. Now, I have a doctorate degree, but I'm not smart enough to understand some of this stuff. So, I don't know. The bottom line is, I do think those goals will be discussed, because I think the population at large is going to insist that they be discussed. We're going to go through this process again in 2007, and if I have anything to say about it, I'm only one councillor, but if I have anything to say about it, we're not going to go into months and months' worth of closed meetings to come up with these types of goals.
Well, these goals are really ridiculous. I mean, they're some of the, yeah, they're some of the lamest things I've ever seen. I mean, posting goals on the city website and giving periodic progress updates, that's a goal. I mean, you know, according to what the previous council set forth, it is, but that's just, you know, that's a housekeeping-type thing. That's an administrative thing. Establishing a public comment station, again, I mean, isn't that something that he should just sort of be doing as part of his job, trying to make City Hall more user-friendly?
Or it's something that any member of the council could have called Mr. Wollink and said, "You know, Dick, within a week, please put a suggestion box out here," and I'm sure he would have done it.
Yeah.
So, it just, it's, the city manager, in our form of government, the city manager is a chief executive officer. And with all due respect to the previous council, the goals that were set are not worthy of a chief executive officer. Most of the goals that were given to him are goals that you might give an administrative assistant, but not to your city manager. I mean, even the goals that are more challenging, like they're asking the city manager to demand efficiency types of things from department heads, well, even those kinds of things, they don't have to be in a yearly goal, and in fact, that is already in the city's municipal codes. The city manager is already charged with finding efficiencies in city government.
So, there, again, you know, what was this past council thinking to actually put this into a goal format? I would think that in these budgetary times, tight as they are, and threats of more belt tightening coming from Madison, I would think that finding efficiencies would be something that he should automatically be doing year-round.
And it is, and it's not something we have to tell him to do again, because it is in his responsibilities as listed in the municipal code. So, goals should not say to a city manager, "Do what you're already charged with doing," and that's the problem. But I don't want to look to the past, the prior city councils, the prior city council. Now, we have to look to the future, and as a member of the council now, I, along with my six other colleagues on the council, will try to make sure that the manager does accomplish these goals that were set out, and then hopefully, for next year, we'll come up with a set of goals that are more challenging and more worthy of a chief executive officer.
Well, what kind of goals would you like to see?
In my judgment, the city manager has to be judged almost exclusively on what he does to revive the city in terms of economic development. I think that the city manager has to be the chief economic development official in the city, and I think as a set of goals, we can divide that major goal into other types of things. But that is number one, and we're not doing that. Just let me give you an example of what the problem is, Cheryl. I think we might talk about this a little bit later, but let me get to it now. As I'm sure most of our viewers know, a story broke in the paper about a possible Westside Development where the Robbins Restaurant...
And including, what is it, the number-two hole on the golf course?
Yeah, and the developers possibly want a tax incremental finance district for golf course property, which I'm going to be fascinated to hear what they come up with as a justification for this, because TIF districts are supposed to be for blighted land or industrial land. But let me give you an example of what the problem is, Cheryl. The council on April 10th received a memo from Director of Community Development, Jackson Kinney, that was written to Dick Wollink, the city manager. And I just want to read you the first two paragraphs of this memo, because I think this demonstrates what the problem is, all right? It says this. Now, remember, this is Jackson Kinney, Community Development, writing to Dick Wollink. He says, "The city was contacted by the consulting firm of Martenson and Izel, who is representing a developer group and/or entity, where the consultant asked that the city maintain confidentiality on a proposed project while the project proposal is refined." Now, think of that sentence. "The city was contacted." What does that mean? That apparently means Mr. Kinney was contacted.
I would assume so.
Now, wouldn't you think that in something like this, wouldn't you think the chief executive officer of your government would be the one contacted? Instead, we have the community...
Not usually.
I would think that.
See, I, having covered city politics for a lot of years, things like that usually go to community development.
Go-to. Someone directs to.
Well, no, they usually contact them.
But it gets better. "An initial meeting was held between city staff and the consultant on Wednesday, April 4th, at which time the city was first shown a site plan for the proposed development. At this point, it appears that parties associated with the proposed development have contacted one or more city council members and others in the community to discuss the project and indicate their concern regarding issues city staff brought up and expressed to the consultant in the initial meeting held last week, which they apparently took as opposition to the basic project." So, if I understand this correctly, the developers, through a consulting firm, approached the Department of Community Development. The developers apparently didn't like what the Department of Community Development said and went to two members of the city council, right? Then, the Development, Department of Community Development Director, Mr. Kinney, is writing a memo to Mr. Wollink, telling him about this happening. Now, maybe I don't understand the way our government works. Wouldn't you think that your city manager would know about this?
Before a city council member?
Well, to me, Cheryl, this is a tiny example of what our problem is. No one in this city really knows where economic development begins and ends, and it just seems to me you need to have a central focal point for economic development. If we want it to be Jackson Kinney, fine. Let's just be clearer about that. And also, this idea that these developers felt empowered to say that they want the city to maintain confidentiality, does this mean that the, I don't know what council members were contacted, but were they asked to sign, remember the confidentiality agreement with Mr. Doig?
I remember.
With Five Rivers? If any developers are watching right now, if you ever ask me to sign a confidentiality agreement, don't even bother with the phone call, right? Ain't going to happen. The job of a city council member is not to maintain confidentiality on these issues, but the job...
Well, and why go to just a few? You know, were they picking select few who they felt might be favorable to their idea?
Probably.
You know, and I say that very tongue-in-cheek. It's a rhetorical question, really, because I'm sure that that's what happened.
Well, my bigger point is, ultimately, if we don't clarify the way we do development in the city, ultimately, everybody loses. The citizens lose because they have no idea what's going on. The developers end up getting confused and angry. They don't know who to talk to, and ultimately, we just don't progress. So, I'm hoping that this current common council will start taking a serious look at what I've called an Economic Development Commission, which would be a chief focal point, a clearinghouse, if you will, where anybody interested in development can at least go and know that that's the place where these, I hope, where the discussions begin. So, I didn't like the sound of that. And also, it just seems from reading this that the Department of Community Development apparently sees its role as being involved in advocacy for projects, either being for them or against them. And that's something, too, I think, needs to be discussed. Who really should be the chief advocates for certain developments in the city? Should it be your manager? Should it be your city council? Should it be bureaucrats in City Hall? That's something we need to work out. I know as a council member, I am less likely to be an advocate for a project if I'm not confident about the ways it got to me. If I feel there were secret meetings that, you know, someone was looking for someone who would listen, it makes it that much more difficult to support a project, right? We need to be open in everything that we do.
This Economic Development Commission that you talked about just a minute ago and during the campaign as well, how would you see that differing from our redevelopment authority that we have?
The big difference would be our redevelopment authority is not run by the city manager. I want our city manager, this is a chief executive officer. He has got to be the point man for economic development in the city, and he would be the head of an Economic Development Commission. Now, maybe the council wants someone else to lead it, but I think it would be healthiest if our chief executive officer led that. And quite frankly, Cheryl, I think that would be much better for Dick Wollink. That would be the council telling him, "Dick, we're putting our confidence in you to do this," and if he can't do that, then that is a grounds for looking for a new city manager. With what the last council did, let's assume for the sake of argument, Dick Wollink meets these nine goals that were set for him, which, by the way, I think you or I could meet those nine goals, probably before this week is out.
Yeah.
How then, suppose the city council wanted to look for a change of leadership? How could they if he meets these nine goals?
Well, I mean, that's true. That is true.
What he will simply say is, and I'm saying this in defense of Mr. Wollink, he will simply say, "I met your goals. What do you want me to do?" And that's why you need to provide him with goals worthy of a CEO. Not everybody could meet that set of goals. It takes a very, you know, talented, knowledgeable, dynamic individual to do that, and I want to set that goal for Mr. Wollink, to give him something to work toward, and I want to see him be able to do it, but if we're satisfied with the nine that we're giving him last year, it's not going to happen.
Well, you know, I mean, if, see, I guess I understand what you're saying about having Mr. Wollink handling, you know, being the point guy for some of these developmental projects, but then where would you see Jackson Kinney's role going?
I would see Jackson Kinney where he belongs, which is as a subordinate of Mr. Wollink.
But his job is economic development director, community development director.
But he works at the direction of his superior, and his superior is Mr. Wollink. Something like this Westside Development idea. If I had my way, the developer or their consultant would know to start with the city manager, and then the city manager could give Mr. Kinney some parameters on which to proceed here. I mean, I find it incredible that a developer could be talking about building on a public golf course and asking for a tax incremental finance district, and two members of the council know about that before our city manager does. I'd love to hear some argument as to how that is a healthy line of leadership in the city. Something has got to be done.
Well, I agree with you on that point. I'm just, I don't know how Wollink and Kinney would work on these things together. I guess you'd have to really sit down and very clearly, you know, delineate what Mr. Kinney's duties were and what Mr. Wollink's duties were.
I'll tell you something, Cheryl. I think it's already delineated in our city's municipal codes. I think the responsibilities of the manager, the responsibility of the Director of Community Development, I think are very clearly laid out, and it's very clear that the Director of Community Development works at the pleasure of the city manager and not vice versa.
Okay.
You know, and in all fairness to Mr. Kinney, I don't know him very well. He and I have never had extensive conversation, but I have a feeling that he never really wanted this kind of public upfront role, but I think he's been forced into this position largely through the way the council has allowed our city manager to proceed with the kinds of goals that we've seen. So, I don't know if it's a question of changing leadership or if it's a question of just giving them some higher performance standards. I'd like to think it's the latter, but this is going to be an interesting rest of 2007.
Well, I think so, and to Mr. Kinney's credit, he did, I don't know if it was in the memo or if I read it in the paper, but he has already apparently told these developers that, you know, they need to make a case for the creation of a TIF district over there, because he doesn't think either, apparently, from what I read, that that really qualifies or meets the criteria for creating a TIF.
Well, in a, after the Mercy Medical controversy about the TIF there, and the fact that this city has at least 17 open TIFs...
I think so.
Maybe more, and much less in Nina Fondalac-Happleton.
Oh, yeah.
I think had Mr. Kinney told these developers, "Oh, don't worry. We'll find a way to get you a TIF on a golf course," no, I think that would have been the straw that broke the camel's back for a lot of people. We have to start applying the state TIF law in a very strict, rigorous manner, and hopefully, this can be a test case for that.
Well, you know, something else that, when you talked about that they had wanted this to be confidential, and of course, when you start talking to more and more people, you lose that ability to keep it confidential, and I think that's why it's now out in the open. But the fact that they wanted it suggests to me that as this thing starts to gain a little bit more momentum, they're probably going to be going down the same path that Tom Doig and the Five Rivers Resort did in wanting more and more closed sessions with you council members and, you know, with the city manager or with Mr. Kinney. And we both have a certain feeling about these closed-session meetings, and I doubt seriously that your attitude is going to change on that now that you're on the council.
I want our city manager, not our city attorney, again, I want our city manager to lead. If our city manager can persuade me that we need to go into a closed meeting because competitive or bargaining reasons require that, I'll go into the closed meeting. But it's going to take a lot more than simply having at the end of an agenda, "We're going into closed session after this meeting." I'm not opposed to closed sessions if they are within the parameters of state law. And I do think, again, this is something that we can't just shuffle it off to the city attorney. The manager also has to be an advocate for doing business in the city, and I want, if I'm going to go into a closed session, I want to know that our manager thinks it's appropriate. I want to see Mr. Wollink do more than say, "What does Mr. Kraft think?"
Well, he looks to Mr. Kraft, because Mr. Kraft is the city attorney.
Right.
And, you know, he's not an expert in law, so he looks to the expert.
But I want him to tell us that he has now heard the opinion from Mr. Kraft, and he believes it, that it makes sense to him.
Well, let's talk about Mr. Kraft, and not him specifically, but some of his opinions on some things. One of the things is, at the last council meeting, the regular council meeting, you had wanted to ask a question. Each week, the city manager puts out a newsletter, and it goes out, I mean, it's a matter of public record. People could, it eventually makes its way to the website. Some blogs have it on, or they have had in the past. You can get a copy just by requesting it from City Hall, but it goes out to the council, and you guys get it in your packets on Friday afternoons, and it just kind of talks about what is on his calendar for the upcoming week. And you had a question about that.
Right.
And you were prohibited from asking that during, about whatever your question was, during council member's statements, and the reason you were prohibited from doing that is because it wasn't noticed on the agenda as something to talk about. Now, you know, a little history on this for people who don't understand, a few years back, Mr. Kraft said that because of an attorney general's opinion on something that happened in another community, no longer could council member's statements be made about anything unless they were noticed on the agenda, because, God forbid, you take a vote on it or something and take action on it. And that, by the way, would have even kept Shirley Maddox from talking about arts events that came up, and she just, you know, disagreed with that, and she just went ahead and continued announcing her arts events. Mark Harris, at the time, said that he was going to say whatever he wanted within certain parameters, and, you know, so thank God that they had the sense to go ahead and do that. But I understand where Kraft is coming from. You don't want to get yourself into a situation where you are talking about something that you're, that you end up taking a vote on at some point down the road, or inadvertently taking a vote that night or making a decision on something. But what was your question going to be?
Well, and by the way, at our May 8th meeting, I now will have, as a council member's statement, a question about the city manager's newsletter. So, I will be able to talk about it. I guess I can preview it here. Really, what I wanted to ask is, why on the city manager's newsletter does the city manager very frequently say, "On Tuesday, I'm in meetings. On Monday, I'm having meetings"? I want to know who's he meeting with. If he's not going to tell us who he's meeting with, then I would say, "Don't even put that in the newsletter." I mean, I'll just give you, just give you an example to show you what I'm talking, maybe it's no big deal. For example, on the April 5th newsletter, it says, "Looking at my calendar for next week, on Monday morning, I have meetings here at City Hall." Okay. "On Wednesday morning, I have a meeting outside of City Hall." Well, at least we know he's going outside of City Hall. But in all seriousness, oh, yeah, "On Thursday, I'll be out of the office for most of the day for a meeting. On Friday, at 12:00 noon, I have a meeting out of the office." Well, but in all seriousness, Cheryl, where I'm going to be going with this is, I want to know if the public has a right to know who the manager is meeting with, because my concern is that in this, I'll say, confusing development structure we have here, is it consultants talking to us? Is that who he's meeting with? Say, for example, consultants for developers for the Westside Project? Is he meeting with the access people? Can we know who he's meeting with? Because if there are people that are lobbying our city manager, I want to know who they are, and I think the public has a right to know that. Who's doing, who is doing business before the city? Now, if we can't know that, if it turns out that the manager is meeting with somebody on a Monday at noon, and we can't know who he's meeting with, I want to know why. and we can't know who he's meeting with, I want to know why.
Well, I think that that's a very good point, and I think that you as a council and we as a public should know who he's meeting with. But, you know, it could be something as simple as he's having staff meetings. Okay, say that. It could be he's meeting with the Regional Planning Commission. Okay, say that.
Well, and the other thing is, though, I hope he is meeting with movers and shakers in the community. I mean, those people need to talk to the city manager. He needs to talk to them. But on the other hand, don't you and I have a right to know that those meetings are taking place? And I'm not suggesting there's anything improper going on.
No.
I don't think that there is, but...
Chances are, there's nothing sinister about it, if you will.
There's nothing sinister about it, but it's all part of this, you know, many of us who ran for office this year, Cheryl, actually, everybody who ran for office this year, talked about open accountable government. And if there's something that we can't know, then the burden of proof is on the City Hall administration to tell us why we can't know it.
Right. Well, you know, and I agree, and it's probably something very, very mundane almost, if you will. I know years ago, when I served on the Board of Directors for the Humane Society, as we were looking at sort of pulling away from the city a little bit more and looking at building a new shelter and that kind of thing, you know, one of my duties that I was charged with was sitting down with him and just finding out, you know, some real specifics about how much money we're getting from the city and what, you know, what this is about and what this is about. And, you know, it took all of probably forty-five minutes or an hour, but that was a meeting that he had. And I wasn't lobbying him, I was getting information. And so it's probably something very, very simple, but, you know, just put down what it is.
For example, the access group, I want to know what meetings are going on between City Hall Administration and the access group. Who are they talking to? If this West Side Development Group is talking to our city administration, how much time? I mean, in the city of Madison, they actually have a lobbying law where if you are representing a developer, you actually have to register with the city of Madison. You register as a lobbyist. So, for example, I don't know who Martenson and Izel, the consulting firm, I don't know who they are, but it sounds like they're doing some lobbying for this developer. And...
Can I see that one?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
I think, yeah, I saw one of their trucks on the way over here tonight, and they are just, I think they're consultants.
Yeah.
For, you know, they've done work for like the Nina School District and things like that.
And I mean, you know, people can call me and let me know. I mean, do you think that you should be able to know who is meeting with our city officials? I mean, I know that if I get an email from anybody, that email is potential, or is open, it's an open record. So I would also think that meetings with me would be an open record that people could know. Now, maybe that, maybe not. Maybe there are some things that can be kept secret, although I don't know why we would not want people to know when our city leaders are meeting with developers.
Yeah. And, you know, also, a thought that I just happened to have just now, maybe what he does is, when he prepares that newsletter, he just sets aside small blocks of time for people who, you know, maybe it's someone from a government class at a local high school or something. Maybe he just sets aside a block of time for meetings.
Yeah, and I'm not saying, for example, that I want to know the content of his meeting.
Just who he's meeting with.
Who's he meeting with? And maybe we might see a pattern developing. I think people in this community have a legitimate interest in knowing, who do our city leaders talk to? Because if you know who your leaders talk to, that then gives you much better insight into kind of things that get done in a city, or don't get done.
And how they get done.
And how they get done. I mean, what if it turns out that almost everybody our city administrators talk to are, say, Chamber of Commerce connected? Hypothetically, I have no idea. What if it turns out that almost no one they talk to has anything to do with, say, poverty in the community? Gee, then that would answer a lot of questions, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
I mean, it's why at the federal level, I mean, we need to know who are our senators meeting with? Who are our congressmen meeting with? Who's the President of the United States meeting with? Then all of a sudden, policies start to become that much clearer.
Absolutely. Well, let's move on to the Leach and PMI. Now, PMI is going to be entering their, is this their third season, I think, that they're going to be starting promoting and managing, if you will, the Leach Amphitheater? They have not done, I don't think, a very good job at all of doing what they said they were going to do when they, you know, stood up at several council meetings talking about why they should be given the contract. And they have not paid the city anything more than the $30,000 bare minimum that they have to pay each year. And, you know, and now about three or four weeks ago, as we tape this tonight, they said that they couldn't even get national acts in here now. It's too difficult to do. And yet, that was going to be, I mean, when they first talked about why they should be promoting this thing and managing it, they were putting names out there like Cher. I mean, remember that? Do you remember that? We were hearing all these great things about what they were going to do, and they haven't been able to do anything above and beyond paying us the bare minimum of $30,000.
And this year, they said in their document that their goal is to break even. So it looks like we're not going to get more than the $30,000 this year. But, you know, obviously, getting national entertainment is difficult for this, for a market this size. But I think the bigger problem, Cheryl, has been they have not been good with the community in terms of creating a transparent, easy way for average citizens to use that facility. Remember, two years ago, the goal was, we're going to have weddings at the Leach.
Yeah.
We're going to have the Oshkosh Community Band at the Leach. We're going to have maybe high school graduation at the Leach. It's turned out that everything is too expensive, and the rules that PMI has in place are just too onerous. So I do think that we need to start looking toward management of that facility that is more citizen-friendly, because let's not forget that facility was supposed to be a gift to the community, which I interpreted two years ago as meaning that anybody in this community who wants to be able to use that facility ought to be able to do it relatively inexpensively and with rules that are fairly clear to follow. We haven't had that at the Leach, unfortunately.
No.
So in some ways, Cheryl, we got the worst of all worlds. We didn't get the kind of economic development we thought we were going to get from it, because we were going to bring in Cher. And we didn't, we didn't get the community involvement. So hopefully, the council and the city administration can start having some serious discussions soon about how we can get PMI to do something different, or maybe how we can bring new management into the facility.
I realize you've only been on the council, you know, a few weeks as of this point in time, but have you heard in talking with any other counselors or anyone at City Hall, has the Suppley Group, you know, obviously, they're here in town, they are following what's going on. Have they approached anyone that you're aware of at City Hall about, hey, you know, if PMI wants out, or you decide to give them the heave ho, we'd still be interested?
Mayor Tower told me in passing that there were some discussions going on, but it was almost literally in passing. We didn't get a chance to really talk about that, so I don't have any more information. I think there's some discussion going on. Hopefully, within the next few weeks, we'll know something.
Well, you know, it only makes sense that if you're going to use a facility like that for any kind of function, it's going to cost some money. You need electricity, you need someone to clean it up, this, that, and the other. Yeah, it's going to cost some money, but maybe a local group, a local family would have, who has local ties and a lot of business at stake in the community, maybe they would have a little bit more community-minded spirit.
Well, two years ago, I thought the city should manage the facility, but that looked like it wasn't even on the table.
Well, it was in the beginning, and then all, I mean, our Parks Director, Tom Stefani, if memory serves me correctly, he was all for it in the beginning, but then he did a 180, and all of a sudden, that was off the window.
I don't know. I don't know if Elk took priority. I don't know what, I don't know what happened, but that option was off the table for some reason. And to me, the Suppley Group looked stronger than PMI because of what you said. Local business, more of a community orientation. In fact, their entire proposal seemed based on finding ways to draw in the community to the facility. So if the Suppley Group wants to come back and take a shot at it, I'm certainly ready to listen to that conversation, because it is a beautiful facility, and somehow, we have to make sure it meets what I thought was the purpose of it, so that it could be a focal point for the community.
Okay. The Oshkosh Chamber of Commerce is now working with the city to, you know, possibly move out of its existing location, and I think that there's been some talk about possibly going into the office buildings where, along the Fox River, by Mercury Marine, where Access is talking about putting in its its property, project, whatever you want to call it. You know, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, Cheryl, I've only been on the council since April 17th, and I'm already, I'm learning that trying just to connect the dots is a very difficult thing to do. Because I know that a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Rickers from the Access Group said that they were shooting for 50% occupancy in advance for the supposed office building on the Fox River. And then shortly after he said that, the council gets a memo indicating that the Chamber is interested in moving into that office complex. So you wonder, has the Chamber been recruited to move into this potential office complex and so on? I want to know how to connect these dots here. But then we get the memo that says that it would be, I think, something like a $3 million project to tear down the Chamber Building and then reroute Division Street to align it with Marion Road. That's, it's a road project, essentially. And apparently, the Chamber Building was appraised at $500,000 four years ago. All right. Quite frankly, Cheryl, until I hear more information, I can see no compelling reason for tearing down the Chamber Building. I mean, if the Chamber wants to move out of there, fine, but we hear all this talk about a downtown grocery store, other shops or whatnot for downtown. I don't know why we tear down that building, quite frankly. To realign a road? I don't know if I understand that.
Well, Jackson Kinney has for years, I believe, wanted to clean up that intersection because it's kind of weird the way it all sort of comes together. And if you recall...
But a downtown sundial is not weird. I mean, it's just, you know, there's, you're going to have a little weirdness in a city. I just think what happens, Cheryl, and again, this gets back to the way we do economic development. On the one hand, we say we have needs for our downtown. For example, a grocer, let's say. Then on the other hand, the structures that we have that might meet that need, we got to get rid of them because they're in an awkward position. It's very much like when we had the Walgreens building. I love the downtown park, the sundial park. It's a nice park. On the other hand, you know, if we had found a way to use the building that was there, maybe it might have been better for our downtown economy. I don't, I don't know.
Well, people were very upset when Walgreens went. I mean, that was, that was a staple downtown, really. And it's a shame that it was taken away, and...
I just think before, before the city council would give the green light to essentially paying the Chamber to move to an office complex, I think at the very least, we'd have to approve the office complex first, wouldn't you think? I mean, if we were to first approve the Chamber moving into an office complex on the Fox River...
That's sort of backwards, yeah.
And quite frankly, Cheryl, I don't know how I'm going to vote on a potential office complex, but I got to be honest with your viewers. So far, no one has called or emailed me in support of it. The most dominant comment I'm getting is, an office complex on the Fox River? Why? And I haven't answered the question yet. I'm anxious to hear what Mr. Rickers and the Access Group says.
Well, I mean, if it's, see, I don't really have a feeling about it one way or the other, because if it's, you know, something that's going on the tax rolls, what do we really care? If people want to have palatial offices, you know, on the river overlooking the water, okay, that's fine. I guess we still need to find out what eventually is going to go across the river, where, you know, Morgan, was it Morgan Doors that was over there?
Yes, yes. Yeah, we don't know yet.
You know, and it's Jeldwin, or it was Jeldwin for a while. Still don't know what's going to go on.
And I'm not necessarily opposed to an office complex either. But what I'm going to tell, when Mr. Rickers from Access comes before the city council, this is what I'm going to tell him. I'll give you, your viewers a preview right now. They say, Mr. Rickers, you have to give me an argument to take back to the people. All right, I have to, I see my role as a council member. If I'm behind a development, to be a strong advocate for it. You want to see business get done in the city. But you have to give me an argument. If the only argument is, well, there's nothing else valuable for this area, sorry, that's not going to cut it. You know, if your only argument is, no other developer has stepped forward, sorry, that's not going to cut it.
Well, see, that property is so big, you could have a lot of different things.
You have to give me, as a developer, you have to give me some compelling argument that I can take back to the people, and in good conscience, I can then fight for this project. And, you know, in fairness to Access, they have not had to make their public proposal yet. I'm anxious to hear what it is.
Well, you know, I will give them credit for at least being very, very open with the public and actually seeking the public's input.
Stu Rickman said it best in his column last week. He said in the 90-minute online chat that Tim Rickers of Access had, he did more in 90 minutes than the Five Rivers developers did in two years.
And that's true. That is true.
And I think it's to their advantage. I mean, I think that when, and I'd say the same thing to the West Side developers. For some reason, developers think that if they keep matters confidential, they stand a better chance of getting their development in place. I think they've got it backward. If you do your development as much in the open as possible, then you stand a chance of getting people excited. And quite frankly, Cheryl, that's what we need in the city, something to get excited about, and that's what I really want for the riverfront. Not an attitude that, oh, well, there's nothing else we can do there. These guys have stepped forward, let's let them do it. Can't we have something that we can get excited about? Something that we have confidence is going to make it a better city, a more robust and thriving city?
Mixed use is, I think, probably the best way to go.
Absolutely.
You know, put some offices up there, but then find, you know, other uses for the rest of the land.
Well, originally, what it was sounding like, and I was getting excited about it, it was sounding like a mixed-use development that would have some affordable housing, it would have some retail, some restaurant, maybe some upscale housing, but mixed. Now, it's looking like the only thing, and we're, you know, it's very early in this process, but it's looking right now like the only thing that's really certain is the office complex and maybe upscale condos. I don't know if that cuts it. So I want, again, I don't want to prejudge it. I want to give these developers the opportunity to explain fully. One thing I do need to do more research on, as I think all the counselors should, is this concept of master developer. What exactly did the previous council agree to when they let Access be the master developer? Because when I hear Mr. Rickers talk about this, he almost sounds like whatever they want to do is a done deal. I know he's not saying that.
Yeah, right, right.
But when you've labeled somebody master developer, doesn't that sound important?
Very, very.
Not just the developer, they are the master developer. And I want to know more fully, what does that mean? Because I hope we're not in another Five Rivers situation, Cheryl, where the council has to spend months just trying to get its vote back to make sure it has a say, so we'll soon see.
Economic development, now, we touched on this before. At the last council meeting, you guys had a workshop with Doug Pearson from Champco, which is our industrial development arm, and with Rob Kleiman from the Oshkosh Area Economic Development Corporation.
It was like watching Fred Astaire and Gene Rogers from like those old movies from the 50s.
Ginger Rogers.
Well, two men, Fred and Gene Kelly, and it's just a song and dance. I mean, with all due respect to Doug Pearson and Rob Kleiman, I think they are great guys. I think they work very hard. But I think they too, because of the lack of leadership from our council and our city administration, they've been forced to almost act like politicians. They always seem to feel pressured to make it sound like there's these robust, great activities going on. You know, I live on Parkway Avenue, across the street from City Hall. I look out my window, I see at least four houses up for sale. I see streets strewn with garbage. We hear about the crime problem. We know that people are underemployed. These folks shouldn't be pressured to give us a presentation that is pure public relations? Because Mr. Pearson, to his credit, said, we've got to be honest about what's going on in the city. Yeah. So let's, we know the positive stuff. We know Champco's done some great stuff. I don't know as much about OAE DC.
Right.
But let's assume for the sake of argument, they've done some really good stuff, too. We all need to get our hands dirty on this, Cheryl, and really... We all need to get our hands dirty on this, Cheryl, and really get a hold of what the not-good stuff is and fix it. Because Doug Pearson, one year ago, said the current structure for commercial development is broken and can't be fixed.
Wolfly broken.
Wolf, right. One year later, now he's learned that in fact, it's not broken.
Well, I don't think there's a whole lot of people in town who really believe that.
No, they don't.
I think that there was, you know, some politics involved there that has made his...
Well, and again, I want to be fair to them because I think that Pearson and Kleiman have been put in a position that they should not be in because the leadership on economic development has got to come from our manager, our city administration, and the council. Pearson and Kleiman have a vital, vital role. But unfortunately, they've been thrust into the forefront, and they shouldn't have to be there.
Right. Well, you and Paul Esslinger at least asked questions. Nobody else really asked any questions. And in fact, you know, you had said that you kind of got sort of chastised a little bit by Dennis McHugh for asking questions.
I just heard that through third-hand, that he thought maybe the questioning was inappropriate because they were there to tell us what the organizations do. And, you know, in fairness to Dennis, I don't know if he said that. If he did, I disagree.
Well, yeah, because they could have put their information in a memo.
Right.
You know, as far as that goes.
My view is, as long as I'm on the common council, anybody who comes before us is liable to get some questions.
Well, that's what workshops are all about. It's not just supposed to be one-sided.
And Kleiman and Pearson, I think we're lucky if we see them once or twice a year. So I think that's the opportunity to get them in public to talk about what they do.
Well, yeah, and you're right. I mean, if that's what McHugh said, then I think that that is the wrong attitude to have. A workshop is a workshop.
And quite frankly, I don't think Esslinger or I put them on the hot seat. I don't think we asked anything inappropriate at all. In fact, I think they were probably pleased with getting questions that, you know, forced them to defend and think about what they do, so...
A couple of things real quick before we run out of time. A couple of things that will probably be coming forward to the council. The Oshkosh Advisory Parks Board is in the process of considering an ordinance that would keep kids who are 13 years and older from being specifically at Little Oshkosh in Menominee Park, but if it's something that, you know, works, they might carry that over to all the parks, unless they're accompanied by a child 2 to 12. And I guess the reason being is you've got teens over there smoking, committing vandalist acts and that kind of thing.
So you can make trouble, but if your five-year-old brother is with you, then it's okay? I don't know, Cheryl. I'm really anxious to see what kind of ordinance the Parks Board comes up with.
Well, the other thing, and this goes back to Dennis McHugh, a couple of meetings back, he had asked city manager Dick Wallack to start putting together some information on these ordinances that were seen pop up in more and more communities, which restrict where registered sex offenders can live. Now, you know, I suspect that this is something that's going to be brought forward to this council at some point down the road. You and I have talked privately about this, and you know where I stand on it, but what are your thoughts on such an ordinance?
Well, I just think that we have to make sure that they're not overly broad so that they don't include within them people that are not a danger. I mean, I understand such ordinances in a very, if they're drawn very narrowly, all right, then they're okay. But quite frankly, Cheryl, I'm not familiar enough with what they've done in Green Bay. I need to read more up on this.
Yeah, well, I know that what more and more cities are doing is it's, I mean, there are some communities that say, if you're a registered sex offender, you can't live anywhere in the community at all. And then there's others that, you know, they say, within X an area, X feet or X miles of a school and so forth. But the thing is, that's only restricting where someone lives. It doesn't mean they can't drive down the street. It doesn't mean that they can't park on the street and prey on children. And, you know, more importantly, I think the issue is, we have to be very careful about what we're deeming a sex offender for purposes of that kind of residency restriction. Because there's a lot of people who are sex offenders who, it's a teenage boy and girl who are having consensual sexual relations, and yet, because of the way our laws are structured, they're being deemed sexual offenders. And they're registered in some cases.
Well, I hope the common council will look at a proposed ordinance in a very calm and rational way, weigh the legal issues. Because one danger of any elected body is that it can fall prey to the wave of emotion at the moment. And, you know, there's a lot of buzzwords involved in an issue like this, and we got to make sure we get beyond the buzzwords and make sure we do whatever's fair and best for the community.
Right. What committees were you appointed to?
I am on the Housing Authority and the Board of Health. Now, I did ask to be on the Parks Advisory Board and Traffic, and I didn't get on either one of those.
Okay. Who got on those?
Dennis McHugh is on the Parks Board, and I don't recall who was on Traffic.
And who went on the Plan Commission?
Paul Esslinger, who's on the Plan Commission.
And so have you had any meetings with your committees yet?
I did meet with the Housing Authority, and I think it's going to take me a while to learn all of their issues. As you know, they deal with a lot of Section 8 housing issues, and quite frankly, I just need to just get more up to speed on exactly what our housing situation is in the city. I'm actually glad I'm on that, Cheryl, because as you know better than just about anybody in this community, we do have an affordable housing problem.
Oh, yeah.
And I don't know what being on the Housing Authority can do to help me understand that issue, but I'm sure it's not going to hurt. So I hope I can do a good job there.
So you got a couple of meetings under your belt. Any regrets about having run?
No regrets for having run at all, but I am already starting to see that even though it's called a part-time job, it's not really part-time. There's a mountain of paperwork, and I think to do this job conscientiously does take a lot of work. It's easier when there's citizen involvement. So I really do encourage people watching this to email me at tony@tonypalmieri.com or on the city's website, you can see a city email, or call me at 235-1116 because I think that when we know the views of the people out there, that makes our job that much easier.
Sure. Have you been getting a lot of, you know, communication from people so far?
I think there's been a substantial amount. Usually, one or two emails or phone calls a day, and I think that's a fair number. Mostly so far, it's been from people who are very concerned about things like the riverfront project, this latest thing with the Chamber of Commerce and possibly tearing down their building, that has gotten some email. So, yeah, I mean, I think, I think everyone would like to see more input, but I'd say so far, I've heard some counselors over the years say that no one ever contacts them. I find that shocking.
Well, if they haven't had people contact them, maybe it's that people just didn't find them approachable. But you're approachable, so. Anyway, thanks very much, and keep up the good work. And thanks to you at home for joining us. We'll see you next time. Until then, take good care. Keep your eye on us. We've got our eye on Oshkosh.